I applaud you, Mr. President, to the topic, United States of America, and to the recording for which stands one nation under color, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Mr. Townsend, we have any agenda changes or revisions?
No, no changes.
Okay.
Thank you. You ought to be there.
We have the real call, please.
All right. Gary Cunningham.
Here.
Nathan Long.
Here.
Doug Bryson. Deanna Hinton.
Here.
Bruce Robinson.
Here.
Steve Griffiths.
Here.
And Riley Hoagland.
Here.
All right, we're moving on to election of 2016 officers. Do we have nominations? Doug Bryson is not here.
Doug Bryson.
Everybody's going to nominate Doug Bryson.
I'd actually, maybe keep everything the same as is.
I second that motion.
Normally, I believe we do nominations and then after nominations you vote.
Nobody's been nominated, so we're just.
Do we have any nominations?
I'll, for Chair, nominate Mr. Robinson.
Are there any other nominations? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Did you want to vote?
No, I just, the nomination isn't the vote you would, someone would make a motion for.
Oh, okay.
Take a motion. I'd like the motion that we vote on that nomination.
Second.
All in favor?
The motion would be to appoint, sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead, Richard, I was just trying to.
Make your point.
The motion would be to make Mr. Robinson the Chair.
Yes, it would be. It said that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, do we have nomination for Vice Chair?
I would nominate, or I'd like to make a motion to nominate Nathan Long as Vice Chair.
Second.
All in favor?
Same thing.
All right.
So I'm a candidate, is there any other candidates?
Are there any other nominations?
Would you like to be nominated, Riley? Skip it.
Skip it.
Okay, we're fine.
So now you would, now you would make a motion to appoint the Vice Chair.
I'll make a motion that we vote on, Vice Chair, at this time.
Second. Who is it?
Nathan Long.
I wasn't sure there.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we have minutes. Request for approval of the regular meeting minutes for November 3, 2015.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for November 3, 2015.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I motion we accept the minutes for December 10 meeting with the Planning Commission and the joint, the joint meeting between the Planning Commission and the City Council.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carrie. All right, public comments on non-agenda items or matters not involving a public hearing? We don't have any public. Final orders, resolutions, written communications, none scheduled, public hearings and deliberations, none are scheduled, old business, none are scheduled, new business, none scheduled. Reports and comments?
I just wanted to let you know that the appeal from the Planning Commission to the City Council, where you upheld my decision regarding a setback in building height issue in Rhodes End, Mr. Seneca, have withdrawn that appeal. So the City Council will not be hearing it.
So the building goes, the building is going to be left as is?
That remains to be seen.
Seneca was appealing our recommendation of our City Council's.
Was appealing your decision, upholding my decision that at the, at the height that the building was, it violated the north side yard setback.
What would normally take place then in a case like this?
There's a couple possibilities. One is, I know they were trying to work out a lot line adjustment with the property owner to the north, to move the property lines so that then there wouldn't be a setback issue. But there's a complication on that, but I was talking to their attorney yesterday and they believe they have a solution to that, so we'll see, see what happens.
It's been an interesting.
Yeah. Also, I just wanted to let you know that we have posted a request for qualifications for the purchase and development of the Fernwood property, the villages at Cascade Head, which you know, as you come into the villages at Cascade Head on Devils Lake Boulevard, first on the left, there's Maplewood, where there's some existing houses, go a little further up and then it's, that's Fernwood, where the road's been roughed in, some of the utility connections have been roughed in. And it's, was, part of it was subdivided for 60 attached single-family homes, but nothing's been built, and then there's another part that is not subdivided. So, and we've posted a request for qualifications for people who would be interested in purchasing it and developing it. And those are due, the statements qualifications are due on the 22nd of this month, and then we will go through a process of selecting sort of leading candidates and negotiate on what terms there might be and what the cost might be for the.
That was posted a month or so ago, wasn't it?
It was, what, about two weeks ago now, I guess? It was before Christmas.
Can I ask if we have had any response?
No, not yet, but they're not due until the 22nd, but there have been inquiries and we posted it on the ORPIN, which is a public procurement website that the state of Oregon has, and I know there's been over 20 expressions of interest in it.
Excellent, excellent.
Which part is it for again? The, the one that has been roughed in or that has not been roughed in?
It's been roughed in, well, it's, it's in two pieces. It's not the, not the piece that's, where you first go in, where there's some existing houses, it's above that.
All at the end.
It's in two pieces, one piece is roughed in and the other piece isn't, and they're both involved in it, about 11 acres.
What's it zoned for?
Single-family homes. It's approved, as I said, the, the roughed in part is approved for 60 attached single-family homes. And what I expect to happen is that whoever the developer is, I imagine they will be suggesting some changes to the approved plan. So we'll just see what happens on that. If, if there is a need for changes to the plan, then that would, after notice, it would come here for hearings.
Could those single-family homes be used as VRDs or is there a limit on that?
The, I believe the, is it the CCNRs on that one that prohibit VRDs? I'm not sure, I know one of them.
I think it's a condition of approval. I think it's one of the conditions of approval for, for.
Okay, yeah, okay, so, so right now the answer appears to be no. Also, we'll be putting out a request for proposals in the near future, later this month, for developing a new preliminary master plan for the villages at Cascade Head as a whole. So the original approval was for over 1,800 units, and there's, there's engineering and for economic realities that probably make that unlikely, so we'll be expecting some substantial revisions to the plan.
There's only one for both, for all three parts for that, the developed, the roughed in and then the undeveloped?
There's one preliminary master plan for the whole villages at Cascade Head, the entire thing, and this will, that's what that will address.
Okay.
Then there could be, there is a refined preliminary master plan for Rock Creek Village, which is the southern part of it, and that ultimately will have to be revised as well. That'll be the next step.
So it's Rock Creek, Homewood, Fernwood?
No. Fernwood and Maplewood are both part of Rock Creek Village. Then there's, there's Rock Creek Village is the southern part, which includes Fernwood, Maplewood, and some other property. And above that is Logan Creek Village, which is basically at the end of, where the pavement ends now.
Where it goes downhill?
Yeah, that's the area, it would be where Logan Creek Village is, and then the extreme northeastern part is Salmon Creek Village.
And we are looking at putting a proposal for the Salmon Creek Villages?
No.
It would be for the Fernwood, Maplewood?
It's Fernwood. The revised, the preliminary master plan would be for the entire villages of Cascade Head, all three villages.
Right.
We're also looking at, at selling Fernwood, which is one piece of, of Rock Creek Village.
Thank you.
And then ultimately we'll be selling off more and more of it as time goes on. And I believe you've got some materials from the Public Works Department relating to the sewer-ing of the east side of the lake, is that right? Do you remember getting it?
No.
One person, I see one shaking head, yes.
Is that the flash drive we received?
I think so.
Yeah, mine was corrupted, I couldn't.
I did not receive it.
Okay. We'll see what we can do, they were wondering if you have any comments, but apparently your comments are, we can't see it, so.
Richard, we were talking about maybe having that be an agenda item on the next Planning Commission agenda, so that Stephanie can be here and kind of talk through those, some of the finer points with me.
That's all I have.
Can you comment on the state of the VRD considerations at the City Council though?
I'd rather not. No, um, uh. They have charged the city manager to, going back out, you know, we went through a public participation process, information gathering, and last July, and now we're doing some, city manager has come up with some sort of range of possible proposals, is taking those on the road to see what responses will be, and that should be this month, that should happen. And then shortly after that, come back through Planning Commission and City Council process on any amendments that might be, might be proposed.
Thank you, sir. Mr. City Attorney?
I'll just report that you had a Luba appeal filed from the decision of the Vacation Rental Appeals Board, when the Planning Commission sat as the, as the appeals board. The city filed a, a response brief and motion to dismiss based on lack of jurisdiction, because as you recall, the appeals board specifically found that you didn't have jurisdiction over land use, and, but yet there was an appeal to Luba. So I think we're in the time period where they have to respond to my motion, and then they'll reschedule oral argument. I think oral argument was supposed to be next week and they got canceled because my response included a motion to dismiss, so I'll keep you apprised.
Thank you. I had a question for you. Do we have an emergency escape easement of any sort on books? Specifically thinking, there are, there is a property near me on 64th and Mass that would be a perfect escape route in case of an emergency from that section of the beach, but that property owner is pretty livid about people crossing his property, and I'm wondering if there is some kind of a way we could compensate him for putting up a sign that says, "No trespassing, but if you got to get out of here, this is the way to go."
I'm not familiar with the property, but I'll get with the planning department and try to figure out exactly where it is and who owns it and.
It's at the, at the top of 64th, right there, where it butts into that small green cottage there. And from the street, if you were panicked and escaping from a tsunami or something, you wouldn't think to go through there, but I've walked that route and it takes 2 minutes and 22 seconds to get to the Neptune, if you go through there, and it takes about 12 minutes to go around. I've scouted five other similar properties in Rhodes End, and I was thinking if we had something on the books that could maybe, and I'm thinking of compensation, but I don't know if that's something we can do, but some way we could indicate that this is a proper escape route, it's no trespassing, don't go here, but if it's an emergency, this is the best way to go.
That's something, that's something we can look into. I'm not sure what compensation might be needed, but it's something that we can check out.
Sounded like an easement to me. All right. That's it. Planning Commissioners, comments?
I had one thing. You know, throughout the year, we deal with the issues that come before us, and I was wondering if at any point in time, we want to meet, maybe in a work session, to talk about what we've learned in the process, and if there's anything we want to recommend to City Council as a consequence of dealing with some of the issues that came before us. For example, tweaking an ordinance, or maybe a new ordinance that would deal with this situation more effectively. But I think it would be positive for us, as well as the Council, for them to get our feedback on issues like that, that have been based on our experience as planning commissioners for the year.
Are you thinking about a joint meeting with the City Council?
No, maybe our meeting together to see what, what, if anything, we want to present to them. And maybe there's nothing, but just to talk about what we've learned and what we might want to pass on to the City Council as a consequence of that.
That's, certainly can do that, and you can do that in any meeting, any of your regularly scheduled meetings as well. You know, you can be new business and, you know, you can bring something up and say, "We want to give this information to the City Council," I think that would be appropriate.
Do you want to raise that now?
Well, if we're all in agreement on that, there would be something I would raise, yeah, yeah.
So, give us an example.
Well, we dealt with, for example, the VRD zone this year. And in our dealing with that is, is there anything that came out of that experience that you might want to recommend to the City Council? So for example, what I learned in that process is that zoning might be more suitable for PUDs than it is for individual households, for example. And maybe if they're going through the process of tweaking the VRD zoning ordinance, that might be something they would consider that they limited to PUDs. But that's just something that came out of my experience being on this commission.
I like the idea of us looking a little bit deeper, you know, and bringing up things and maybe thinking out loud about them in a work session, as opposed to just during this time where we're just announcing things, or asking questions, or asking for advice, or, it just seems like that's a more, that's a little different type of a conversation. But I also, just to piggyback on, on what you were saying, is I also had kind of a, well, what if kind of moment, based on the same, the same issue, and that's that, and it might just be me, but I don't think so. When we were talking about VRDs and we're talking about the bigger, larger ones, and we were discussing before, you know, the idea of lodging, you know, what that language is really about them. But if they're larger and different, then perhaps they're no longer a house, they can still be a VRD, but maybe it's a different category that we don't yet have a name for, and that.
Hotel?
Well, I don't know, I don't think it's a hotel, because a hotel has the separate, you rent rooms separately, whereas the, the dry thing for the VRDs is that, like whole families or bunches of people that know each other share the cost of a house, and they, they cook together, and they sit in the hot tub together, they do all those things in one location. And, and there's this, this, it seems like sort of a need for these larger houses, well then where do they go? And we keep calling them houses, and I don't think they're houses any longer. And that's where I'm having trouble, is if there really is a need for those larger places, but they don't want to be a hotel, or they don't want to be a motel, well then what are they? And how do they, how are they managed? And what, you know, what are they called? What do they need? Do they need sprinklers? I mean, you know, it's, it's a full conversation, and I don't think we can have that in this type of, you know, unless we can think about it, know that we're going to be discussing it, or thinking about it, do have time for a little bit of research about the ideas, like the idea that Steve had about a PUD for the area, I mean, are we even looking at areas anymore? Maybe not. But anyway, so that was one thing, just on that same wavelength, that I was, that was kind of an aha moment for me, well, what about these then? What about this?
Would that be the distinction between like a commercial quality building versus a residential quality building?
Right.
Because there's already a set of rules that pretty much delineate how far you can go.
Yeah, but I, you know, but I think we need to talk more about them, because when you're talking about like a commercial business in a commercial building, and you have all those things that have to be in place, that's one thing, but if you're calling it a house, that seems to fall into some other kind of little category here. And when you have a number of people, at what point do you really need somebody of, a responsible person to be there? You know, a lot, like a lodging house, we were using that example way back when, and a lodging house has a person there, you know, and if you travel and you, and you stay in a manor house, they have people there, you know? Even Airbnbs have people there, they're supposed to. But, so I'm just thinking there, maybe there's something out there that's neither one thing nor the other, but something different, which is what seems to be, there seems to be some want for.
Well, I think you're pointing out perhaps that some of these buildings don't qualify or can't be defined as homes, as VRDs being used as accessory use, because they're really, were never intended to be a home.
Yeah, they're purpose-built VRDs, I mean, it's, you know, it might look like a house, but that's not its purpose, it's not there to house a family and, you know, do the daily things, going to work, going to school, whatever, that's not its purpose, so, you know, the purpose.
Like a short-term rental versus long-term.
Right, and it's, it's, I just think it's a little bit different animal than what we've been talking about. I don't think there's a name, at least I can't think a name for it, but, but it's been one of those things that's just been kind of hanging out there for me, that I think could use some discussion, whether we table it or not, or.
I think it's a valid concept. We have, we have a few, two that I can think of in Rhodes End that are clearly not homes. They are hotels in every, in everything except having a front desk. And I, I think they really squeeze against the upper limits of residents built to a commercial standard. There may be a new name for that.
And, and you know, I think too, that the, the timing is probably good to be thinking about all these things. You were saying the city manager is going to be going out and talking to folks about, about different ideas, and so it's a time to, you know, really think about this kind of thing, and maybe set some names to things, or parameters, or whatever needs to be.
I'd, I'd like to see the city manager come and, and join us in a similar kind of forum that he's been carrying on with the City Council. We probably have a similar level of experience dealing with the VRD issues that the City Council has. If we could encourage him to put us on his agenda for that.
It's a good idea.
We could be one of his places to visit.
I'll pass it on.
I had, I, were there any other comments? Gentlemen, ladies?
Oh, but go ahead.
No.
Oh.
Get the floor.
I don't mean to take it.
Sure you do.
And I was just, this, well, actually I can ask that off, off the television. Oh, I know, one of the other things I was thinking of is training. Now that, at least I've been around for almost, not quite a year, it's kind of obvious that I probably don't know enough about what I'm, why I'm sitting here, or how, how we are making decisions, so I just wanted to ask, is there any general training that any of you staff could think we or I could use for this coming year? Learning something new? If things change, do we need an update about anything?
We did have two or three training sessions, Ms. Rappicello carried on about.
I had addressed quasi judicial procedures at some point, and probably it's time to go back and, and refresh on that. So I can work with Richard and get something together, so we can get some training. I know it's very important that you be reminded of the proper procedures in quasi judicial proceedings, and also in legislative proceedings, that we need to make the distinction that what's okay and what's not okay. There's still a record in legislative positions, decisions that needs to present a adequate factual base for the decision that you're making, and so there's things to think about there as well.
I think we also have a gap in ability to research the rules. You might, you might consider walking us through the ordinances and so forth, so we could be a little more adept at, at finding the answers.
Related to that, actually, your next scheduled meeting is the 19th, and as of now, there is nothing on the agenda that might be a good opportunity to do some training. And I think, actually, I was looking at the Goals and Work Program you all set about a year ago, and one of the things on there was some training, and we fell down on that, but we can, we can do some training next time, and also at that meeting, it might be a good time to talk about goals for 2016.
Yeah, and I was going to make a request too, for the goals, if, can we chunk them out in a year, like each quarter, each half a year, kind of about approximately when we should expect us to meet some goals, or?
Sure.
Just for fun, just for an idea of how the year's going to go, when I should take my vacation, for example.
If ever.
Ever.
I had a couple items I'd like to bring up. One, one of them is a thing that I'm calling the Hinton Program.
Where are you going?
Several times, several times we've had, Deanna's come up with, when we're talking PUDs or, or development programs, a set of practices that we would like to see, and it's pretty extensive, and I, and I think we ought to bring that back to the table and maybe formalize it as a part of the city's program, or a part of our program. I'm talking about specifically runoff, noise, traffic, the other, the other impacts that development programs have on the neighborhoods.
development programs have on the neighborhoods. And Deanna goes back through it and redevelops it every time, but I'd like to see that somehow formalized or-
So, it's a standard set of conditions that would apply across the board?
Something that we've, because I pretty much agree with everything, everything she's brought up and I think probably many of us agree with much of it. So, if we could consider that, if you'd like to maybe formalize your list and bring it back up to me.
No, some of it's just-
My other one is a notion I've been floating with about the VRDs and I just wanted to spit it out here for you guys to consider. I've been thinking about this, this notion of the accessory use and trying to pick a number that's valuable or valid as an accessory use and it seems like we're doing that, we're shooting in the dark. I'm just, what number makes sense? What number guides Lincoln City to where it wants to go in terms of the quality of life for the citizens and the non-VRD owners as well as the commercial value of the VRDs bringing to the city? The notion I came up with is, was what I'm calling a, a usage boundary, like Oregon's growth boundary, a usage growth boundary wherein we discover what is the current usage of our VRDs today and then somehow, somehow figure a way to allocate that usage across all of the VRDs. But that's a boundary. If we said we have, I don't know what the metric would be, if it's bedrooms or number of adult occupancy nights or whatever it is, but if, if our staff could discover that we had 90,000 adult nights during the year 2014, then we define 90,000 adult occupancy nights as our usage boundary and then allocate that equitably across all of the VRDs instead of trying to pick a number out of the hat. Any thoughts on that? The usage growth boundaries is, I think, personally, I think it's a marvelous piece of legislation. Works really well for the state. And I think if we had something like that for usage growth, we could, we could decide 10% growth in the next year, bump that number up, allocate it, everybody gets another night or another two nights, but it's spread across the population of the VRDs.
I think people are going to rent their house as a VRD, whether it's a VRD or not. I'd like to know if there's possible, the percent of houses that act as VRDs that aren't officially registered in the city.
Licensed.
Licensed, I'm sorry. If that's something that happens or if there's even an idea of number of houses.
Talking about pirate VRDs?
They exist. There's no, there's no debating that. They're out there, it happens. I just, we already have them and we're, we keep debating on where and when and how. I just, the more that this goes on and the more that it's year after year, why isn't it just a citywide thing that we can't just have a VRD? You apply for it, you do it, you operate it. If you have X amount of negative contacts or X amount of negative something, you lose your license for the year. Next year, you can reapply. Maybe we can offer, like you're saying, a percentage of more applications for possible houses that can be VRDs the next year according to the TRT or whatever visitor convention bureau numbers they give us, instead of having it be specific areas. It's just, if you, I don't know. It's just, the more that this goes on, the more-
This idea of mine is strictly a residential thing. It would have nothing to do with commercial VRDs and-
And I'm-
-zones.
Right.
And it would be licensed, licensed residential VRDs would share in this distinct and limited resource.
Of, of the number of nights?
Of the number of nights.
And according to where, in the VRD zones or a universal citywide thing?
This would actually do away with zones and accessory use. It would replace zones and accessory use altogether. It would be the accessory use ordinance, but it would be a usage growth boundary. Not, I wasn't looking against you, nor should-
I don't think you are, no.
Pirate VRD.
I don't think you are.
I don't think we could, I don't think we can in any way legislate piracy.
No, nor can you probably get a number on that. But I'm just, I'm saying that it's there.
Well, actually, you know, Timothy Novak spends some of his time tracking down those that are operating illegally and he does follow up, so it's not-
But there are some.
It is something that we work on all the time.
I know there are a few that we believe to be illegally operating VRDs that we can't prove, but if we have reasonable proof, we do pursue them. You know, we have about 500 VRDs in town right now and probably maybe a handful of those that appear to be VRDs, but we don't have the evidence right now to, to prove it. If, you know, we keep track of those things and if we're able to, to find evidence, then we try to get them to come into compliance.
I've got a question.
When we're having the debates, the ongoing debates about the VRDs, many times I've heard
citizens that felt like the VRDs were a real crime problem in their neighborhood or a parking problem or a mess problem or whatever, whatever, whatever. Do we have any way for like a police officer to come in and tell us what we really have on the record as things that have happened at VRDs?
The police generally respond to noise complaints at night and there haven't been that many. The level of violation certainly has, has gone down over the last several years because we have stepped up enforcement a lot. Because again, it's usually, it's trash, parking, noise are the principal violations.
Well, whatever, whatever the violations that have aggregated, I'd like to have some statistics on them, you know? This is really what's happening, not the rhetoric that we hear because I, you know, person after person has said things like, it's a parking issue, they're all over the road, the garbage is flying around. And if we had a, you know, some statistics that said, in fact, this is what we know for certain, and then we would cut down on the rhetoric and get reality into the storyline and we'd know whether we're, you know, whether we're beating a dead horse or the horse doesn't even exist.
Or it could speak to the value of increased enforcement, that it's working.
Or whether we need enforcement, more enforcement.
Isn't, isn't that actually part of, part of one of the ideas that the city manager pulled together after his last round of meetings with, in the neighborhoods, with that call-in number? One call-in number for everything? Isn't that going to corral how many call-in, calls in? How many are trash related? How many are noise related?
How many are actually VRDs and not somebody's private property?
Right. Well, I think that will sort-
An extinction, you know?
It should sort that out, I would think.
Your house and your buddy's just there and that's not a VRD.
Right.
You know what I mean? Like where-
I guess what, that's what I'm trying to do. I'm trying to get to level of rhetoric to be in align with what's actually happening, reality, rhetoric and reality.
Well, I think, I think in order to get to that, if you listen to most of the public, they're the ones complaining about trash and they're the ones complaining about parking, whatever. But in order to track it and get an actual number of what you want to see, it has to be enforced. And that was the biggest complaint I heard from a lot of the public was the lack of enforcement.
Let me say that we get, we don't get many calls. We have one person who's responsible for VRD enforcement in the city. He works 40 hours a week and doesn't work on Sundays, doesn't work on Saturday nights, doesn't work on Friday nights. And one thing we've heard year after year after year, you know, we've, we send out postcards, everybody, these, these are, this is the local contact for this VRD. If there's a problem, call them. So, some percentage of problem calls are going to them. We never hear about them. We also hear, as I said, years and years we've been hearing, I'm not going to be the police, I'm not going to call. So, there, we know there is some number, it may not be that great, but we know there's some number of complaints that we never get, either because they went to the local rep or they just didn't call at all. We do have an enforcement person who goes out and does, I think, a good job of dealing with violations. And as I say, I think the number of violations has really, really dropped from, say, five or, five or six years ago or whatever. It's dropped considerably. But as far as, if you look at the, the records we have of violation calls we've gotten, it's information, but it's, I think it's far from conclusive information because it's very incomplete.
So, we're going to live with rhetoric and just assume-
Well, you know, we hear, you know, it's, you know, it's anecdotal evidence or something. But that's, it's anecdotal and it is evidence and you give it the weight that it deserves. You know, we've, we've tried to set up a system where we don't get the calls, where it's, you know, you go to the local rep and they deal with it and, you know, they're good at dealing with it in the most cases. But as pointed out, one of the things we're looking at is having just basically a hotline number for someone to call, be it police dispatch, to call with a VRD problems and then gets dealt with at that level. And one of the things, one of the possibilities that the city manager's talking about, the council talked about, is having somebody on duty in the evenings or at night, especially on the weekends, whose job is to do enforcement. You get those noise complaints or whatever, you get the parking complaints, there's someone to complain to when right now there basically isn't. I mean, you can call the police, but they're not going to respond to a trash problem. They have better things to do. But if there, we had more enforcement resources, then you probably would find there were more complaints. So, the information, we do have information, we're happy to provide it, but it's, as I say, I think it's really incomplete, doesn't, doesn't give a good picture. And, you know, I'm not trying to say that there's a lot of problems. I'm just trying to say that you can look at the data and say there were only 200 complaints this year, there's no problem. And that may or may not be true, is all I'm saying.
I'd just like to use my street as an example. That's, there are seven VRDs on our street.
Seven?
Yeah. Some nights it's real quiet, but there are those other nights. But, and, and sometimes-
It was on a very short street, by the way.
No, it's not, it's not a short street, it's just a dead end. It's actually longer than a regular street. Yeah. Come on back over. Okay, so the, what I'm trying to say is that it all depends. To answer, to answer your question, Gary, it all depends. There are some houses that I have to call the police. There are some houses that I can call the management company, but it depends on what day or night it is. If it's at night, some of the managers won't answer, sometimes they don't even return my calls. And there are some that are very responsive and sometimes even at night. Why is it my job to know all of that? But anyway, the point is, is that there isn't one place that gets those calls now, so there's no way to track it unless I personally at my house track each house and, you know, we let the trash go this last weekend. It piled up across the street and blew out into the street. My husband went and scooted it back over and we just decided, no, they're coming Monday to pick up the trash, we'll just let it go. So, I'm just saying, the issues are there, they continue, but there isn't one place to collect all that information because there isn't one place, like for me, one person to call for all the houses. So, you'll never know unless there's that number that can help with all of that corralling of info.
Just parenthetically, I want to do a shout out to our sanitation folks. They do a fabulous job. I've seen, I've seen Nate and his cohorts out there on their knees picking up trash that has blown over and I, I think they do a wonderful job of taking care of it.
Is there an identifying placard or something? I see a lot, not a lot, I see some of the businesses that operate with VRDs identify their houses as VRDs. Is there something that a city, as a city, we can mandate, this is a VRD with a phone number on the property somehow to, to call this? If this number doesn't work, you call this one or to show that it's a, I know, you're going to label it a VRD and they don't want to know, but it's a VRD. And how are we supposed to know?
There is a requirement that, that something be posted on, on the house, giving contact information. One of the issues, of course, has been nobody, if, if it's a, like there's a raucous party going on, you're going to walk up to the door and look for the number, you know, get the phone number off of it and then go back if people aren't going to do it. But there is a requirement to do that and I think we'll be seeing, that, that has not been complied with across the board, but we'll be seeing more of that, more complete compliance.
I think having a single number to call would be so valuable because, you know, I receive notices that this house is now a VRD or that house is, and this one's managed by this company, this one's managed by another. I don't keep track of that, I don't. I want just a number to call at the police station and say, there's a noise at that house or there's noise at this one. But I think it just, we need to make it easy for our citizens to respond to problems with VRDs or with anything, you know?
I mean, how much are those like text services, you know, that you could just text it and always complain at this address and then it goes somewhere and they read it? I mean, it can't, you know, you can't, it can't be that much as another officer that, you know, that doesn't work Friday, Saturday and Sunday nights. I mean-
That's a good idea.
Do you know what I mean? Like just text the address, this is then, you know, and then it forwards it on. How, I don't know anything about that, but if Papa Murphy's can have a texture with pizza, why can't we have it? Always complain.
I want to extend Gary's notion, the rhetoric comment. We talk so much about VRDs and, you know, fundamentally, VRDs are about affluent people renting space from affluent people, but we've got other problems in the city that we have a lot less of a grip on. We spend a lot of our time thinking about high-density housing and whether or not we should approve or disapprove density around housing. Some of our, some of our deliberations are involved in employment. Where should we put, where should we locate employment opportunities and so forth? But that's an area where we have almost zero information. We don't know anything about, other than your anecdote from two months ago, Gary, where you were, where you opened my eyes wide open about how bad a problem we have in this city, how difficult it is to get low-income housing. Those are the kind of numbers I think we could, we really need as a planning commission when we're deliberating things, specifically things about low, low-income, high-density housing, employment issues, homelessness.
The survey should help on-
We just don't know what we're dealing with and it seems that as a planning commission and as a community development director, that you might have a grip on those numbers and be able to educate us.
We've gotten a grant from Department of Land Conservation and Development to prepare economic opportunities analysis, buildable lands inventory and affordable housing analysis. In fact, Deb and I are meeting with a representative from DLCD on Thursday to go over the scope of work and we want to get that out, get that work going as soon as we possibly can. That's one of the key pieces for developing the comprehensive plan. And I, right now, what we're looking at is the comprehensive plan having some areas of real emphasis of housing is one of the biggest, economic development, another, transportation, infrastructure. But especially the housing and economic development are being, being really key things and so we'll be putting a lot of effort into getting the background information and then just seeing what, where we need to go next to deal with those issues. with those issues.
We could also use some input from some topic experts, like Mrs. Anderson, Family Promise, could come on and talk to us and give us a flavor of what, what Lincoln City holds for, for people at the, at the raw edge of
You know, someone asked me last month for statistics on homelessness, and the unfortunate thing I had to say is, is there's, for Lincoln City, we have nothing reliable. Can't tell you how many homeless people, again, the school has a pretty good idea, the school system, of how many homeless children there are. But we can't tell you the number of, of homeless with, with any degree of accuracy in the city. And, you know, in some ways, that's not surprising, because almost by definition, you can't reach out to at least some of them and say, you know, if you, you can't, you can't go to someplace, somebody that doesn't have a home, if you don't know where, where they are, or where they're going to be. You know, the census workers, you know, they do go out to the homeless camps and whatever, so we, they, there is some information from five, almost six years ago now, from the 2010 census, but that's, that's a hard one to pin down.
But it's an important one.
It is. It is very important.
I, I was astonished at my own ignorance when Gary made his speech a couple of months ago about the difficulty these folks are having finding any place to rent.
Yeah.
I had no idea. Chairman of Planning Commission, I ought to know that.
Valuable information. I mean, there's tons of information we can make better judgments with, or direction with.
We do know there's a huge demand for apartments, for affordable rental housing, huge demand that's not being met. Now, we got 55 apartment units built last year, and another 29 that'll be started later this year, and we expect more. So, and we had a meeting, and I guess it was in November, with another developer looking at a development, apartment development, could, could be 3200 units, ran into an engineering problem, but there are, there are possibilities. There are people who, who recognize the need and are looking at ways to fill it. Unfortunately, those, those solutions are relatively long-term.
Well, and, and large developments of high-density housing generate a whole lot of resistance. I, I was kind of hoping we could maybe talk about some sort of maybe spot zone, where we could share the pain throughout the city of high-density housing, instead of having 1,600 units in one spot.
Right. Well, yeah, we have done things like encourage mixed-use, accessory dwelling units. That hasn't caught on as much as I hoped it would. We've only really had one new, one application for a new accessory dwelling unit. There are some that were probably, were established illegally and are being legitimized, but I only have one brand-new one coming on right now. I'm hoping that, in general, people will recognize the opportunity there to, to have a, you know, small unit either added to their house or adjacent to their house, where they can get some, some income. And we're also, one of the ways of dealing with that is looking at our system development charges, because that really affects how much it costs to, to build and buy a house. And I was talking with our financial planner briefly today about that, and it's looking like, like there's things in the works that could substantially reduce our system development charges, so that could promote more affordability.
In case you don't know, the system development charges are applied to each new dwellings, and it's base, it's the same amount regardless of the size of the dwelling. So a new accessory apartment would have to pay, what is it, Kate, like $12,000?
About $14,000.
$14,000. So that's enough to put people off if they were thinking about adding a little apartment on their garage or something, so.
That, what is that charge cover?
Sewer water, park fees.
Transportation.
Transportation impact fees.
So that's license to put in the sewer, and license
Well, it's paying your share of the existing system.
$14,000 doesn't seem like a lot to me. I came from Erie, Colorado, where it was around $30,000 for a new home, so.
It's, it's all relative, but, but, you know, we, we see it deter development in this town, so.
You've probably looked at other types of funding, too, to, like, matching grants or some type of help to, help the developers get a foothold?
There are, like, federal programs, and there are developers who specialize in that and are very good at it. And, you know, if they see an opportunity, you know, they'll, they'll deal with it. And maybe we need to encourage that more, to look for those developers and suggest they come in. One thing I mentioned on the Fernwood sale and development, one of the things we've said should be included in that is an affordable housing element. Some of, some of the dwelling units that are built need to be in the affordable class, integrated into the overall development, but, but be affordable so that we have that workforce housing available, at least have, have some available. The idea would be, let's say that you had townhouses, I'm not saying that's what it'll be there, but let's say there'd be townhouses. There can be a smaller townhouse. They're basically stylistically the same, but it can be a little smaller, so if you, if you're on the street, you see these are nice townhouses, but every once in a while, there's one of them that's, that's more affordable to, to working people, so.
What was that? I was interrupted over here. Didn't hear what you said.
Do we have the number for like Newport, for the $14,000? Do we have what they would charge for similar, by comparison?
Our system development charge, I, I'm not, I don't know about Newport specifically. Our system development charges are sort of right in the middle of, of what goes on in, in Oregon.
And there's no condition as far as
Portland that are very, very high. There, I think Newport's is probably lower than ours, but I'm not sure. But there are other, other coastal communities that are higher than us, and like I say, ours is like right in the middle.
And there's no condition as far as if it's a new construction versus an addition? It's the same fee every time?
No, it's per dwelling unit. So if you're building a new dwelling unit, you pay the charge. If you're expanding your house, you don't pay system development charge. If you're not putting on a new dwelling unit, which is, you know, sleeping quarters, cooking, and eating facilities, and bathroom, that's a dwelling unit. If you're adding another bedroom, that's not a dwelling unit. If you're adding a bathroom, that's not a dwelling unit. So it's, it's for new, new dwelling units. So if you're putting up a 50-unit apartment building, you're paying 50 system development charges. And the, those are different from single-family system development charges. They're not, not, not everything's the same, it's the same number, but, you know, it, it gets expensive. Putting up a, a new motel, you're paying system development charges for it, and those are very high. I mean, just when you have to pony up that money up front before you have any income from rents or whatever coming in, it's, it's, it's not the easiest thing to do.
Any other comments, ladies and gentlemen? All right. Thank you, Richard. Public comments, we don't have any public future agenda items, and the next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, January 19th, 2016.
We'll have a training subject on, and we'll talk about goals for 2016.
And also searing the lake on the east side. We'll work on that.
Rejoined.
Now you have to reconvene us. Keep, keep looking at your agenda. Who's you?
No, I'm just
Oh, you're, you're it?
I'm right in.
I'd like to call the order on the Vacation Rental Dwelling License Appeals Board. Roll call, please.
Steve Quirfitts. Here. Doug Bryson. Derek Cunningham. Here. Bruce Robinson. Here. Deanna Hinton. Here. Riley Hoagland. Here. And Nathan Long.
Here. Looking for approval of the minutes for October 10th, 2015.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. Do we also need to reappoint you as chair, if that is our desire before the minutes or after the minutes?
I don't even see that on agenda, so I'm stuck.
As you, excuse me, as you recall, I believe you were designated by the city council to act as the Vacation Rental Appeals Board for a single appeal, so
Roll.
I don't think there's a need unless they decide to, to do that in the future.
If I, if I may ask, typically, the city council will be the Vacation Rental Dwelling License Appeal Board?
That, that is my understanding, that in the past, in the past, they have acted as the Vacation Rental
May I ask, why are we at this one time doing this?
The reason why it was recommended that the planning commission act was that the city council was ex parte'd by the party to the appeal. And so they bumped it to you.
Oh, I thought it was for, more or less permanently, that it wasn't.
Me, too.
I thought at the October 10th meeting, we did elect a president, or a chair and a vice chair
Yes.
At that time. And then, since then, city council has determined that they will be?
No.
No.
No, my understanding was that in the past, the city council was acted as the Vacation Rental License Appeals Board, that they had an appeal, was filed, and then the city council, the entire council, was ex parte'd by a party. And rather than deal with that, they designated you as the Vacation Rental License Appeals Board.
What was the term of that designation?
There was no, I, I think Richard presented it to them and recommended that you be designated. I didn't have the impression it was a continuing designation. I had the impression it was just for that single issue. We can certainly go back to the council and clarify it.
Has there been a Vacation Rental Dwelling License Appeal Board meeting since our October 10th meeting?
No.
As the city council acted as?
No.
They're ex parte'd.
I would like some clarification on that, because that's not what I remember in the audience.
Could we have some clarification on that? If we were just temporary for the one appeal, or is this going to be ongoing?
We'll find out.
Appreciate it. Thank you. All right, let's go back to approval of the minutes for October 10th.
I motion that we approve the minutes as written.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against? All right, so passed. Is there any other matters?
Well, knowing what we're
Clarifying.
Besides what's going to be checked. Exactly what we're doing here.
So no other matters besides what Richard's going to check for us? We're adjourned.
Good job.
Fastest meeting ever.